Good evening. Welcome to the City of Arcola, City Council Regular Meeting. For Tuesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at six P. M. at Arcola City Hall. One-three-two-two-two, Highway six, Arcola, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three. For the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, reserves right to meet in closed session on any of the below items, should the need arise, and if applicable pursuant to authorization by Title five, Chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code. I now call this meeting to order at six oh three P. M., and we have a call. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Greg Abar. Councilmember Greg Abar and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Florence Jack. All right, we'll have roll call now. Councilmember Evelyn Jones. Councilmember Greg Abar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ebony Sanco.
Present.
Councilmember Rosary Bigby.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Jack.
From here.
Also present is Justice Pruitt, Justin Pruitt, our City Attorney. Ingrid Flornor, our City Secretary, and Dr. Net Ordo Goldberg, City Administrator. And Chief Carr as well, sorry, Chief. At this time, we will have public comments of a general nature. As the citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments of a general nature, may do so with a limit of three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for general public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Donald Williams speaking regarding the character of Mayor.
But uh, you see, I probably think of a city where the whole city is very used to get tickets for it.
Tornado lifted it off and threw it across the street. So, Arcola did receive a significant amount of damage with this hurricane. Um, that's why we were asking everybody to do the ISAT that and put the information out there so we can get the help that we need from people. What we found. So, once we went out and surveyed the area, we found that the streets were heavily flooded. Um, we had a lot of downed trees, downed power lines, a lot of flooded homes, severe wind damage and tornado damage. Um, a lot of the flooding came from poor drainage. Um, we had a lot of areas where even some of the culverts had been moved and they were, um, because of the water and the drainage issues. So, after that, this is a post that is, that's also an area where it floods at. But after that, our recovery operation, so coordinated with Fort Bend County E S D number seven, for after-action meetings, we had an after-action meeting with them. So, we could see what they encountered and what we encountered and how we can come together and help ourselves. Some, um, I guess the main point that we came to in that meeting was Arcola and Fresno are out here by themselves and they're gonna have to help themselves. Fort Bend County is not going to help us. So, we have to make sure that we have what we need for our residents. Um, we use small barricades, I said that, and people, um, would run over them. They wouldn't stay. So, we didn't, we lacked barricades, we lacked, um, the high-water rescue vehicles, things like that. Um, we had roadways that were blocked by trees. The trees completely covered the roadway. So, what we did the next day after the hurricane, um, Mayor Williams called City Hall for the workers and just asked them, hey, can y'all come and help clean up if you want to? We opened it up for a cooling center. But then the police department and maintenance, our public safety department went out and, um, cleared streets. They cut trees, they used a sweeper, they removed debris from the streets. Um, we started repairing, um, the street signs. We couldn't wait on Fort Bend County to come out, so we had to do it ourselves. Um, with that, we are looking at some options of, um, possibly doing, um, some citizen emergency with, um, pontoon and, um, maybe getting services to help out in some of those areas. But those are things that we're looking at for the next slide. So, we had a water distribution. We also had a food distribution. We are set up to be a FEMA disaster recovery center. They were supposed to start today. We have been pushed back until the eighteenth. So, I don't know the reason. Um, I just got an email and we're being pushed back to the eighteenth. But they were open on the eighteenth, um, in our community center. FEMA will be here for residents or anybody that needs FEMA assistance. Um, and again, we work cooling center. What we learned from Hurricane Beryl, um, necessity. We need a generator for City Hall, whether it's a drop-off generator or a stationary generator. We need a generator. Um, our servers, um, did have some stuff on the city side that was beefy, but again, we just needed a generator. Well, Corbin County's fuel tank was down. We were not able to use their all the gas stations around here, their fuel, they didn't have power, so we didn't have fuel. We were literally, I get a text message from one of the officers that's trying to patrol and he had miles to enter. So, we're trying to find fuel. We ended up making it to Mannville and we were able to pull up, I think, three of our cars in Mannville. But we didn't have fuel. So, something we need to think is possibly getting a fu- fuel drop during these times or above-ground storage tanks. We need barricades, we need a high-water vehicle, um, boat and drainage issues. Um, with drainage issues, once they're cleaned up, we'll be, um, doing a lot more code enforcement. Because what we have noticed is people are doing a lot of things, cleaning things and chopping vines and things like that. So, once all that's cleaned up, we will enforce the code more, um, through the city ordinances so it can remain. Um, I think once we have the drainage cleaned up, cleaned up, that's gonna help a lot with the flooding in the area and we won't have so much trouble. The lift station, um, one of the stations, I think lift station two on Masterson was down for four or five days. So, that was what was causing the backup to people's homes and the streets. So, that is something we need to look at also. I'm done. If y'all have any questions for me?
Great presentation by Chief Park. Uh, so to build off of what Chief Park presented, we'll talk a little bit about the fire department. Uh, first off, I want to say I'm happy to be here on behalf of the fire department. Um, I know I met with, uh, Mayor Williams here recently. Uh, this may, this may be my first time meeting with council, so, um, I'm happy to be here with you guys. Uh, before I start on this, I'll just note that starting August first, I became employed with Fort Bend E S D as the first full county fire chief of this area. Uh, so we have a lot, uh, a lot of room to grow with this side of Fort Bend County. Uh, prior to the hurricane, I met with your staff, um, I've been with the city administrator, uh, Fire Marshal Burns, uh, Mayor, and, uh, Police Chief Park, um, and we had some discussions on, uh, really on how we operate as a fire department and, uh, future plans with, uh, the E S D and the fire department. So, I'm happy to be here for you guys, uh, and residents. Um, so I'll go ahead and go, uh, to the first slide. Um, just like the police department, the fire department, uh, has a hurri- what we call a hurricane delineation plan. Uh, so it, it, it's measured in twenty-four hour blocks. Uh, once the storm gets closer, we start activating, um, different levels. Uh, we prepare, um, right up to the hurricane making landfall. Uh, so with our fire department, a little history, and I'll try not to waste too much of your time, but, um, just a little bit of information. Uh, we serve as thirty-seven square miles, so we go beyond just the city of Arcola. We cover from the card in five twenty-one to, uh, the, uh, the Missouri County line at County Route fifty-six. Uh, we're looking at about thirty-five thousand residents and populations. That's what we cover on top of covering, uh, the citizens of Arcola. Uh, so just with that being said, we also staff, uh, two stations currently with eight firefighters on duty, career firefighters twenty-four hours a day. Um, occasionally, we do have a battalion chief on duty and we have, uh, our command staff during the, uh, business week Monday through Friday. Uh, so like I said, uh, prior to the, um, the storm, we, we started a hurri- we looked at our hurricane delineation plan. We met with Chief Park. Uh, we activated that storm plan. Uh, your firefighters that covered Fresno and Arcola, we responded to over a hundred and twenty calls for service within thirty-six hours. Um, and yes, uh, that's, that's a lot of calls, uh, for service for our firefighters. Um, to put that in perspective, uh, we normally run an average of eight to ten calls a day. We, uh, we average about twenty-five hundred calls a year for service. That's what we respond to and growing with the population. Uh, so like Chief Park mentioned, there's a lot of challenges that we faced and I'll talk about that here in a second. Uh, within those hundred and twenty calls, uh, we responded to, uh, calls within your city. Uh, we face, like Chief Park said, we face both, uh, high-water, uh, concerns, uh, and barricade issues. Just notifying the public of incidents and stuff like that. So, uh, we'll go through that. So, uh, during the hurricane, we had those, those issues. We responded to those many incidents. Uh, we conducted two after-action reports. We call them A A Rs, which is acronym for after actions. Uh, within the fire department, one was with, uh, the city of Arcola, including, uh, including the staff and, uh, including them with that, and then one internally to build off of, um, what we can do better within the fire department. Um, something that we take pride on within the fire department is, is, uh, our new facility. We're very fortunate, uh, that, that the E S D has provided us with a new facility that's modern. So, we were able to accommodate, uh, with those modern accommodations, we can staff our firefighters and we have a lot of redundant systems built in that. Now, that being said, like you may think if the power goes out, uh, we're, we're in a perfect setting, we're, we're great. Well, generators fail too. So, that's one of the things that we learned. Um, uh, we thought that we were prepared a hundred percent with having redundant systems. Uh, we learned, that was one of the things that we learned moving forward as an example. Um, when we build a future fire station, we're gonna have the capability of, uh, of having a portable generator dropped off to power the facility in the event that a generator failed. Um, like Chief Park mentioned, one of the things that, uh, is interesting to us, or at least myself, is when I started as fire chief, I even asked a question about hurricanes. Uh, historically, in the Fresno, Arcola area, how much water have you seen? And, uh, it was amazing. A lot of folks said, yeah, during Harvey, there were some areas that flooded. It, it usually hasn't been a concern. Um, but now, now we believe it is, uh, it is a concern with the population growing. Um, I believe Chief Park, what was the number that we got? It was close to ten inches of water in twenty-four hours. So, like, put that in perspective and look back, I don't know what, ten years ago, looking at Harvey, had that storm installed out over this area and we would have saw double or triple those numbers, I think we would have had a, a different story. Uh, we do have county resources, like Chief Park said, but unfortunately, uh, there's some, uh, there's some weighting that goes into that and then prioritizing those assets throughout the area. Uh, the fire department used our new station as a cooling center. Uh, like I said, a lot of the things that we learned internally, um, we're taking that and implementing that over a five-year plan, um, with that training as well. Uh, Chief Park mentioned, we have some, uh, concerns with the water, um, the high water. The fire department has put in the budget for fiscal year twenty-five to, uh, purchase a high-water vehicle. No promises made yet. If that's gonna happen, um, our budget cycle ends, uh, actually it gets presented to our E S D next, uh, next week. Um, but that's something that we're looking at doing and hopefully, um, we see a need for it and that government body will adopt that and that'd be a great asset to, to the side of the county. So, that's what we're working towards along with many other projects. Uh, we'll take possession, um, of a, a wildland vehicle at the end of this year. Um, it's a type, uh, six booster. Um, I, I said wildland, yes, like you're thinking of firefighting and we're talking about hurricanes and flooding. What we decided to do was is we went back to the drawing board, um, prior to this hurricane and we talked about storm response and how we can, uh, use it as a beneficial asset to the community. And so, uh, we have the capabilities of taking that unit out of the bag and it could be a hybrid, uh, wildland unit and a floodwater vehicle up to a certain, uh, depth of water within the community or for the needs. Um, I believe that's everything. There's a lot of lessons learned that we had on the fire department. Uh, we're working really close with the, the police department, uh, with responding to similar incidents in the future. Um, just to give you an idea, that's our, our district right there. I wanted to put that up there so you guys can see. Um, that's the service area that, uh, your, your fire department responds to. So, uh, very north end of the district, um, on five twenty-one to, uh, Blue Bond. Get familiar with that area there and then all the way south to the County Line. Council, Mayor, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, Mayor, moving on to C D, Hurricane Beryl aftermath update, hotel and drainage issues. Mayor Peter Williams.
Uh, yes, I, during, during, of course, during the hurricane, of course, a lot of people flooded out. What we ended up doing, we went, we, we went throughout the entire city several times on the road with, uh, Chief Park, because the vehicle was a bit higher. And we, we stopped at every house that we saw that had been flooded out. And Chief Park was, we couldn't get into the, um, the driveway. She would, her siren and stuff. And so, uh, people would come out. Sometimes, uh, they told us that, some of them told us that they had already made other arrangements. They had been out of their house. Some of them, they needed places to be because mold had started building up in their houses. And so, because by the time we could get to them, it was a couple of days before we could get out there with the high water. So, uh, we were able to get, there were five families that, um, needed somewhere to be. So, we've been able to put them up in hotels and we will be seeking reimbursement for FEMA. Um, and also I've gotten lots and lots and lots of calls about drainage and that we need to address drainage. And I have been telling everybody, we are going to address that. Like I say, it's just a multi-faceted approach that we have to take because it doesn't just include the city of Arcola. So, we are looking into that. And if I don't do anything else during this administration, we will address drainage. Uh, the lift stations, uh, we're right now looking at getting some folks to refab those lift stations that need to be looked at, looked into and, uh, be repaired. So, um, so we are. And contrary to what you see on Facebook, that it'll go take months and months to get all the debris out of, uh, out of the city because we don't have a, you know, I wasn't being, it was totally, I wasn't being able to, uh, really, I guess, capitalize on the, uh, relationship with Fort Bend County. Fort Bend County had a specific way that they had to, to, uh, address, uh, picking up the trash and debris. They had to use particular FEMA-approved, uh, uh, vendors and all of that. So, and they were only doing, picking up debris, then they not even, I don't think they even touched the, uh, fence, uh, all the boards and stuff like that. So, they have their own process that I think I thought was taking too long of all the debris we had in the city. So, thanks to, uh, Chief and City Administrator, we were able to work out something with, uh, waste, waste connections and they came through the city. They did not charge us anything. They could come through and pick up this debris. And so, I thank them for, uh, doing that and, uh, they will continue, they will give us out, like I said, they will give us out the schedule and I'll let you all know when they'll be in the area. So, um, that's all I have on this.
All right, Mayor, moving forward, we're on agenda item C E, disaster payroll expense report. Um, it would be Dr. Annette Goldberg on behalf of Ruthie Cable. Now, we're on to C F, update on Fourth of July expenses. Again, Annette Goldberg on behalf of Ruthie Cable. Moving on to agenda item C G, um, July twenty-twenty-four permit monthly report. Ms. Annisha Garrett, Permit Manager.
Mayor, City Council, all those present in the courtroom. Uh, I'm here to report the, uh, Permit Department, um, monthly report for the month of July twenty-twenty-four. Um, we issued three building permits, thirty-eight electrical permits, two field dirt permits, twenty-one mechanical permits, one plat review, sixteen plumbing permits and one sign permit for a total of eighty-two permits for the month of July. Um, although I'm presenting this report too, I wanted to give you guys a quick update on our software that we have for our department. Um, I'm happy to let you guys know that we have processed over three hundred permits in our new system and it is working great. We haven't had any hiccup. Um, we are still building out applications as we go along and we are still working on, uh, different modules uh, with the chief and the fire department. And I anticipate that, uh, by the end of the year, we'll have all of our modules up and running on our new software. Are there any questions regarding the, uh, July twenty-three monthly report? All right, thank you.
We are now on C H, the twenty-twenty-four summer program. Ms. Priscilla Graham, President of Community Express, Inc.
Um, Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving the opportunity to speak before you today and other city of Arcola officers and employees. It's an honor to stand before you today. Thirty years ago, nineteen ninety-four, I came to Arcola. It was the first place I came to when I actually came to this region of Texas. And here I stand today, twenty-twenty-four, thirty years later. And twenty-twenty-four summer program camp this year reminds me what that fire was in nineteen ninety-four. That I had the opportunity to serve what we call the festum community and that's our kids. And so, it just has been an honor to run the twenty-twenty-four summer program. This year, we had our, our programs consist of a four-in-one, meaning we have dif- four different age groups. One of our age groups that I'm most proud of is our older age group from fourteen-seventeen, which are our councils in training, which they get stipends, they do on-the-job training. And they always remind me of how smart they are and they're little people and sometimes we forget because we think they're kids. But they're little people. They have feelings and I've learned so much from them this summer. Our staff ratio to child ratio is one to ten, meaning for every ten kids, there's one staff person. Staff must be at least five years older than the oldest kid that's in your group and that's how people are assigned. So, this year, we exceeded our expectations of councils in training. We had twelve. That's the most we've ever had since actually starting the program. We did something a little different this year. We were able to go on field trips, meaning we were able to go outside of the walls of the community room, have a basketball goal out there that seemed to be a big hit. Um, we actually took a field trip to historic Freemanstown. We took a walk-in tour. We took a photo tour. And twenty-two kids went with us on that particular tour. Main event, main event was a big hit. We had thirty-nine and actually a parent came along and volunteered to help supervise also. We also had the opportunity to go to another agency where we could see how people, what they do. See snacks, eighteen-hundred-and-sixty bottled waters and nine-hundred-and-thirty juices. We operated the program for twenty-six days. There was two holidays in the process. It would have been twenty-eight if we didn't have the two holidays. We had our annual art exhibit, which we had forty-five entries, which was the, the most that we've had. We had a great success. We had nineteen of our kids that actually attended the program that came out and that was more than I've seen in the past. But we had a great time, um, and it's just been an honor. It's been an honor to serve in Arcola and to serve our youth of Arcola. So, does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we're going on to C I, engineers report, including the following update. City Hall sanitary sewer lift station, city hall sanitary sewer lift station force main, sanitary, um, sewer system evaluation and rehabilitation, I N I testing, wastewater treatment plant expansion number one, Arcola water plant expansion, Arcola water plant also. Uh, wastewater treatment plant permit expansion and freshwater supply district number one, wastewater treatment plant expansion number two. Mr. Lawrence Turner with Kalluzza Inc.
Good evening, everyone. Hope please everyone doing good, staying cool. Uh, I'm gonna run through this list because I know we still have a lot of items on the agenda tonight. Please feel free to stop me as I complete each one of these subject matters. Uh, city hall sanitary sewer lift station, as you noticed, we have fresh, oh, not fresh, we have pine tree forest right across in front of the lift station area. The lift station is really just about complete, but it won't be put into service. I want to make sure you understand that. So, there's the lift station and there's the line that goes out that's called the force main. And once the lift station is complete, the next phase is they're trying to put in the, uh, force main. It's an eight-inch force main. They drive, it flows from, uh, the lift station here all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. So, we're getting, getting a new line, uh, that will go there. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Corbin late, uh, earlier today and they're getting ready to unleash that project and we're starting construction. We do have a small easement area. We need to get with, uh, LaHoyes and try to get that easement to there. But that's a project that's moving forward right there. Uh, the next one that I want to talk about, which I kind of rolled them in together, is the city hall lift station, uh, that we just talked about and that's that new eight-inch line. Uh, they're hoping to have that force main in, uh, by the end of the year, if I remember correctly. So, so that'll help with a lot of the, uh, sewer issues that we got, especially over here, not only in this area, but it's gonna help over in the Pineville area as well because the way that the original system was designed. I can't tell you why, but there's a, uh, lift station two over in Pineville and the city hall lift station. They have a four-inch force main that leaves each one of them and comes together at the intersection of Masterson and five twenty-one by LaHoyes. And they join together with a T and then they go to the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant. I've never seen that before, but it's there. And so, uh, with this new line, I think that's gonna help dramatically with, you know, because every now and then the two pump stations, the lift stations are pumping against each other because they're all tied in together right there. Yes, sir, please.
Because, uh, lift station one currently, the old lift station one, is servicing the original housing for the city right now, plus the coast point.
Yeah, it serves everything to the west of five twenty-one, so like, uh, David Street, uh, all of that area right there. Everything to the west of five twenty-one and north of Howard Street, that little area there and everything over there from, uh, the coast point, all of that as well currently right now.
So, um, of course it has limited capacity. That's why we're building a new lift station.
That is correct.
It has more capacity to be in the middle. So, there is a point when there's going to be two houses, more houses built that, um, fill up that lift station and it basically overflows. Is that correct?
No, so you're talking about the new lift station?
No, the old one.
The old. Uh, it would ultimately during peak usages, uh, and it would just basically back up into the system.
So, we don't know how many houses that would be before it causes a problem?
Uh, I can't tell you right off the top of my head. We've been monitoring that, but just normal daily flow, it won't be an issue. It's not when we have all the I N I, that really it becomes an issue.
But I mean, I've noticed with the new section, uh, that's just west of City House. That's, the houses are going up there extremely rapidly.
Yeah.
And, uh, and all those houses are gonna tie into a lift station, I think.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
But that, that's what concerns me is if you get so many houses, then all of a sudden that lift station fails. And it will fail a lot of people.
So, what would happen in a case like that is just catastrophic, I'm just gonna say catastrophic. When they would pump that lift station, they would actually, you know, bring in, uh, blood tablets and pump it. If something were not happening. Now, as far as just regular usage, because we're talking about having that lift station on hopefully by the end of the year. So, we're only talking, you know, a couple of months and I don't think they're gonna have it. They're putting them up. You gotta fill them up and get them in. But I don't think it's gonna be, uh, major disaster epic proportion of before we have that moving on. All right, continuing down, uh, next item, scroll down a little bit for the lead. Fanche sewer system, I N I, uh, that's that ongoing thing that we've done. Uh, we've actually got with, uh, Roland and he's giving us a list of some items that we're looking at. Putting whole manhole inserts, uh, manhole inserts are when you lift a manhole, uh, because of the elevation of the manhole top, we'll put these manhole inserts to keep water from flowing in over the top because whenever you look at a manhole, you'll notice it still has four holes at the top. That's just so you can get a, 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 a piece of equipment to pick it up. Uh, but what we're doing is we're putting manhole inserts. We're also looking at trying to, uh, elevate some of these manhole tops that are in the bottom of the ditch. Because what happens is, again, if it's in the bottom of the ditch and it's not elevated above natural ground, you know, water's gonna go in there and we're creating runoff water. That's expensive. That's an expensive version. Uh, so that's the continuing effort. And that, that just stays on that forever. That's I N I is just, that's just part of the game when you're in the business. Kind of like if you're a doctor, you gotta deal with blood.
I wonder if that campaign we talked about, uh, building some cell towers in the neighborhood. So, is any of that started?
No, I'm still working with Roland on that. And so, we have not done that. And when we do, I'll just report it to him. I'll put it on my monthly report and that's. And when we do, I'll just report it to, I'll put it on my monthly report, and that's where I'll know what sections we've done and what happened. I do not, I do not have a schedule. Again, like I said, I'm working with Roland. He's gonna bring me a map and leave it at the plant tomorrow for us to see which ones we're gonna elevate. Because what we're trying to do is, we have a little bit of money left from Fort Ben County when we did their project, and we want to try to spend all of that first before we spend city of Arcola's money. But we're gonna always have to spend ours, so we want to try to finish spending somebody else's money. Waste Water Treatment Plant Expansion Number One. We actually did a startup of the areaation basin this week, that went well. I think probably within the next thirty days, we'll probably have that plant online. That gets us up to the nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons per day. Pretty much it right there. The next one is the, let's see, oh, the water. And so this is the next expansion that we're doing on the water plant, where we'll be adding the booster pumps and ground storage tanks, we all approved that contract. We're looking at trying to, within the next sixty days, sixty to ninety days, go out for bids on that. Plans are moving along fine, we'll get them submitted to T C Q, T C Q approve them. And once they approve them, we'll try to go out for bids, get prices. We'll bring that back to this body for you all to take the recommendation for approval and award construction. Arcola Water Plant, Ortho Phosphate. Ortho Phosphate is going well, we're submitting plans to T C Q. And understand that anytime we do any modification to the facilities, modification, we always have to go to T C Q. If there's routine maintenance, like we replace a pump, that's what we do. If you change any type of operation, operations and modifications, that requires us to go to T C Q. And so that's what we gotta do because we're changing, going with Ortho Phosphate, with Roland here. Let's see. Waste Water Treatment Plant Permit Number Four, that's the one that's currently going on right now, the design. This is the one, the permit portion, again, you gotta get the permit first before you can do anything else. It's going from nine fifty to four point one. This one is funded by Fort Ben County, it's in the final stages. We're waiting for T C Q to issue the draft permit. I think we should have that draft permit probably in thirty to sixty days right there. Once we get that, that means we can, from a permit standpoint, go up to four point one million dollars for that. Freshwater One Treatment Plant, and this is the one, the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallon to eight expansion. This is the one that initiated by Freshwater Supply District Number One. We have, we're probably got planned at seventy percent right now. On this particular project, I have constant communication with Freshwater Supply District Number One because they're basically, they're funding all of it, I guess. The engineering, the construction, the whole daily work process. So we make sure we say, not only it's our plan, but based on a regional facility to do. I just wanted to just quickly mention that, that regional facility to do. The way it works is, we are joined together, and either party can initiate an expansion, either one. And when they're initiated, they send a letter, just like we, we did one back in five, ten years ago. We sent them a letter and said, hey, we're gonna do an expansion, do you want to get on board with us? They elected not to at the time, same thing with just an idea. That other person's responsible for, they just own capacity. And I understand, even though they own capacity, they pay their fellow out of share for electric, chemical, anything that's associated with it, they pay their fellow out of share. Moving on to the next item, is that? Oh, that's it, that's it. I'll entertain any questions, anybody have with me on those items right there? That I can answer? Not, I'll sit back down. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're at six J. Presentation of Arcola Community Estates by Mr. Patel, the developer.
Mr. Patel was not able to make his voice, so we're gonna do it.
Now we're at regular agenda, Section Seven, Seven A. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action on the June twenty twenty-four financial report. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator on behalf of Ruthie Cable.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion on the budget? I'm gonna vote for.
I make a motion in the third floor.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Sanko, all in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed.
Seven B. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action on the July twenty twenty-four Municipal Operations and Consulting M O C Report, Including an Update on the Pending Work Orders for the City of Arcola, Roland Liao, M O C Area Manager Operations.
Good evening, Councilman May. Y'all should have a copy as well of your operators' report that we provided for you. We're looking at the billing period between June twentieth to July nineteenth. There are eight hundred and ninety-four total water connections, and there was eight, one thousand eight hundred and forty total sewer connections. Just below the Arcola well, pump five million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand gallons, and four million, nine hundred and fifty gallons will build. That put us at a ninety-six accountability. Just to the right, your water and sewer accounts, delinquent accounts were seventy-six, sewer only account were forty-six. Your revenue total was a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and seventeen with thirty-four cents. Just below your wastewater treatment plant has been sampled and impermented and is operating at fifty-seven percent permitted capacity. Page two, we are looking at the sewer treatment plant once again, at what the company, what it took in, in gallons, flow gallons. The total gallons that were brought in through flow was eleven million, six hundred and forty-three thousand gallons for the plant. And from freshwater to, they gave us three million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred, which that was thirty-two, roughly thirty-three percent of what the flow gallons had changed. As you turn your page, we're looking at what was sampled. We'll look at the first one, which is your D O, your oxygen dissolved oxygen. We're at a six point two above a four point O, which is in good shape. Our E P H was at six point seven, once again, above the six point eight, you're looking at the value one on those. I'm gonna skip down to the second to the last, your N H three, or your ammonia, was below point one, which is below that three point O daily average, we were good right there. If you turn your page, the most important is your E coli. We were at one point O, which is below the hundred and twenty-six daily average. And just above that is your chlorine residual, the lowest we were at was one point three four. The highest we were at is three point nine one, which is also below what is required by T C Q. That's all I have on the operator's report, unless y'all have any questions. I'd also give you an update on Lift Station Two, that seems to be a topic that's been come up a little bit. So here recently, we lost, last week we lost the pump, pump one. Coil had burned on that, generally through use and age and time and just, those are things that happen. Right now, the lift station is in normal conditions, we do have pump two running. S D P services took the pump, they're gonna recall that. We talked, I talked to you today, so we're looking at where I didn't have that pump in. We're not at high level, we're okay at this. That's all I have, and just, if you have any questions. Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion? I'm gonna make a motion for a third, the July twenty twenty-four municipal reports. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Sanko, through July twenty twenty-four Municipal Operations Report, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Seven C. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action for a Resolution of the City, of the City Council, of the City of Arcola, Texas Appointing Members to the Board of Directors, of the Reinvestment Zone Number One. City of Arcola, Texas, Gregory J. Abar, Position Three, as Chair, Lizzie Smith, Position Four, Rosemary Bigby, Position Five, and Betty Hall, Position Nine. Joint Appointment with Fort Ben County, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar to approve the appointment of members of the jurors' board, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Seven D. Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action for a Resolution of the City Council, of the City of Arcola, Texas Finding No Objection to the Issuance of Certain Bonds by the Arcola Municipal Management District Number One in Authorizing the Mayor or Deserted Me to Execute a Certificate Reflecting the City's Findings. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Make a motion in the third floor, no objection, resolution to the issuance of bonds to Arcola Municipal Management District.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar for approval of the no objection for the issuance of certain bonds for the Arcola M M D. Seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
We are now moving on to Agenda Item Eight. Plans, Plats, and Permits. A. Discussion and Presentation of a Conceptual General Plan of Reverie Ranch, Map of one, one, three, one point four acres of land out of, out of the David Fitzgerald survey. Abstract Number Twenty-Five, Fort Ben County, Mr. Lawrence Turner, Kaluza Inc. And Mr. Nino Colbert? Or Colbert? Colbert, sorry.
It's up on the screen, but sometimes noodle on sheet or what have you. This is a joint presentation. Again, this is a non-action item, more so information for those on the dais to kind of see what's coming to them. We also have an agenda item right after this, it goes into Section One. What I will tell you, and I guess I'm gonna let Nino go first with what he wants to show, and then I'll just kind of fall back behind and just kind of tell you things that I've looked at and what have you from.
Good evening, everybody. Councilmembers, mayor, it's a special privilege to be able to stand here before you refresh your memory about Thin Road Track. This started back in two thousand and nineteen when the city annexed the initial eighty-two acres into the city of Arcola. And I did have some, some, some big exhibits for you, like Lawrence had. They got Wet and Katie today coming over here, so you've got smaller versions that I was kind enough to copy. But for everybody in the room, there's the big stream, and everyone's gonna be looking at the same. But I, you know, obviously I want to open by saying that the Thin Road has evolved to Reverie Ranch, to be the name of the community, and this is a rendering of what I'd like to think is the the southern gateway entrance into the city of Arcola in the future. And Annette, if you could show the next picture. What this is right here is, this is the, currently the original general plan that was approved by the city of Arcola. And it contains eighty-three acres. And we have subsequently asked the city to give consideration to annexing two additional tracks that have been added to it, and you might want to put up the next exhibit, Annette. And this is a revised general plan that's been submitted to the city for your approval. And what I'd like to ask you to focus on for a moment is the fact that there's the original eighty-two acres in the big portion. the fact that there's the original eighty-two acres in the big portion. Two pieces have been added. One is the, uh, the bottom portion, which is thirty-nine acres. Uh, the green belt that separates it is a high-power line easement, and this track extends all the way down to, uh, Porter Road. And, uh, the, uh, the general plan here shows, uh, some connectivity to the south down Porter Road and also the, uh, the west on Wausau. Those are, uh, considerations that were put into the general plan, but technically, I, I hope they're not needed because we're gonna have three points of access, which would be the two points of access on Thin Road, and then, of course, uh, the, uh, one point of access, uh, at North Pine and Five Twenty-One. And, uh, what I wanted to expand on a moment, uh, while you have that up there, is fact that, uh, overall, this general, general plan contains, uh, approximately five hundred and two acres. Uh, the water that you see through the community will be thirty-four acres of, of lakes with service detention. And what's most relevant here, I think, for, uh, everybody in the room, is the fact that we purchased the, uh, seven and a half acres, which is the triangle that you see above in Five Twenty-One, from New St. Phillips Baptist Church. Tech dot, in working with their expansion, had anticipated making that entire tract of land a dry detention pond. And we had the good fortune of being able to work with Tech Dot, who I've worked with on several occasions in other parts of the city. And, uh, there's obviously concern about the traffic on Five Twenty-One. What we have an opportunity to do here is collaborate with Tech Dot, and they're the ones that asked us to tie into Five Twenty-One at North Pine, so that you have a, an intersection that they can, uh, address from a traffic perspective. And, uh, pursuant to this, we have, uh, engaged a, uh, a traffic engineering study that Tech Dot, uh, asked for, and it, it supports everything that they're suggesting that we did. So I, I just want to bring it to your attention that, uh, this positive impact of just even this little triangle in terms of, of value, uh, this enabled the city to benefit not from just a detention pond, but a commercial tract of one point three acres in the future, but also, uh, the addition of, uh, probably about eighteen single-family homes. So there's a net benefit just right there at that corner to the city of about six million dollars of additional value that will be created through this collaboration, which I think is very positive. Uh, the, uh, the other, the other elements of what we're attempting to do, and Lawrence is gonna obviously have a lot of comments from a civil engineering point of view, but, uh, the intent originally with Reverie Ranch was to try and offer something a little more affordable than what Post Up Point is. Post Up Point is really appreciated significantly, or at least the builder is selling homes with values over three hundred thousand dollars now, which exceeded everybody's expectations. Uh, we'd like to think this would be a little more of an affordable community. The lots will be five feet narrower instead of, uh, uh, the, uh, the fifty-foot lots. They would be forty-five-foot lots, which would be, uh, asking for variance, but that was contemplated in the beginning. And so we just carried the theme into what we're doing right now. Uh, those are the, uh, you know, the significant pieces, other than the fact that the same architectural characteristics that you see in Post Up Point will prevail in Reverie Ranch. And that would be, uh, you know, a lot of brick facades, coach lights, fully sodded yards, irrigated, uh, just generally speaking, a, a very aesthetically pleasing community. And I think that's important also because the kind of second element that's relevant, uh, but intangible is the historical significance of what we feel like Reverie Ranch represents. Uh, Channing's not here tonight, but she's talked to you about the earnest effort she's put into talking to not only, uh, residents of Arcola, but learning a little more about history. We really want to acknowledge it in this community. Uh, Annette, go ahead and go to the next, uh, slide. Uh, what you're seeing here is the first phase, which would be, uh, a, a portion of the original eighty-two acres, a portion of the original plan, which has been submitted to the city. And in addition to, uh, the plat design you hear, all of the off-site improvements have been designed and submitted to the city. And, uh, I think the most lengthy piece of that would be the drainage study. We talked about drainage and how significant it is. We have worked for two years, since two thousand nineteen, really three years, to, uh, get our drainage plan approved by Fort Ben County, which is not an unusual amount of time because they're just very proactive. They use a third-party reviewing, uh, firm to, uh, do their work, and so it's taken quite some time. But in addition to getting an approval of the original eighty-two acres, we also moved forward, once we were working with Tech Dot, to address the general plan and all the detention for the entire track, because our diligence is not about one phase. It's about the general plan and how everything's gonna work together. And I'm happy to say that the most significant approved piece that we have is the drainage study, which is required by Fort Ben for the entire general plan. The rest of the work that we'll be doing on the design will be working with Lawrence as the civil engineer, since this is in the city of Arcola. Uh, lastly, maybe Annette, reverse back to the annexation picture, if you will. Yeah. And, uh, again, there's a request pending to, uh, ask the city to annex these two tracks, which are in the city of Arcola, ETJ, into, thank you, Lawrence, into the, uh, city of Arcola. And, uh, it's, it's logical. It's obvious. It's cohesive. And, uh, again, it's something that I think everyone's been anticipating, and we're finally to a point where we can make this request. Uh, last but not least, uh, is the value component. And, uh, I'm comfortable in saying that at this point, this project will add approximately a hundred and forty million dollars to the city's tax roll, which is, uh, profound, considering that some years ago, the city had less than a hundred million or a, approximately a hundred and twenty million in total value. So it's a, it's a wonderful benefit to the city. There's, uh, the annexation portion would add an additional fifty-seven, uh, excuse me, uh, an additional, uh, yeah, uh, fifty-five to sixty million dollars in value. So there's, uh, a tremendous amount of, of positives for not only what we originally hoped to do, but by adding these two parcels, we've benefited this project and really the asset to the city significantly. I think that's probably as far as I need to go, but I wanted to just thank you for the opportunity to, uh, get this project back in front of the city. A lot of work's been done. Uh, there's infrastructure discussions with the expansion in the water plant that Lawrence referenced, for instance, was a project plan in the development agreement the city entered into years ago with the Arcola Municipal Management District. The completion of the wastewater expansion that's occurring right now, the two hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons of wastewater capacity. This is capacity that was anticipated to be used in the early phase of the original annexation. Uh, so there's, again, a lot of positives. Uh, it's kind of interesting that when we annexed the eighty-two acres, uh, a, a little bit of a, 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 you know, a, we also considered kind of what was going on right now, and the Arcola MMD is expanding, as Lawrence said, the, the lift station and installing the Forest Main to, uh, the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, as he said, that's off to the races, and it should be complete by the end of the year. But again, the MMD is, is, is managing it, financing it. And, uh, again, uh, it's neat to be able to give you an update firsthand, and, uh, thank you for your consideration.
I want to ask you.
Yes.
You mentioned that having a lot size of, um, forty-foot width instead of forty-five.
Yes.
Would reduce the cost of the housing.
Yes.
Could you tell the council about what the difference in cost of the housing is gonna be?
Well, I, uh, I can't. I'm not a builder, Greg, so I can't give you specific numbers. But, uh, I think that the answer to your question would be that the, uh, the lot price would be, uh, probably, uh, ten or fifteen percent less, and the house will be five foot narrower. So collectively, those two, those two elements combined, I think translates into, uh, uh, perhaps tens of thousands of dollars in value. But again, I'm sorry, I'm not the builder, so I can't tell you anything other than to say that we're anticipating the, uh, the value in working with, uh, the city's financial advisor and the Arcola MMD's financial advisor to probably be in, in, in the, uh, the upper two hundred thousands. While you look over here, your average sales price now is up to, uh, three twenty-five. So when I say tens of thousands, I'm very comfortable, I believe, in saying that. But, uh, that's, that's about the most high-altitude question I can, I can answer for.
Have you been involved in, I know you've been involved in the forty-foot section.
Yes.
Have you been involved in some of these, with all the forty-foot?
Absolutely, many times.
If you could counsel the neighbors of those, so they could go.
Excuse me?
If you name some of those.
Yes, a good place to start would be, uh, Cambridge Falls, uh, the community I developed about two miles north of here, off of Chimmy Rock and Tramal Fresno. Those were fifty-foot originally, and the last three sections became forty-foot. And that would be at the back. If you, uh, if you went down, uh, uh, Tealman Boulevard to Tealbury, Chimmy Rock, and head north, the first entrance that you would go in on the right, if I remember the, uh, street name, it, it's called Wealthy Fleet Cross, Crossing, Wealthy Crossing. Of course, in there, and then turn left in the neighborhood, you'll see a subtle change in the, uh, lot width. That's the closest one I could think of. I could give others, but they're geographically in other areas of the city. You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Uh, I know this is preliminary. I look forward to, uh, answering any other questions and, and of course, uh, continuing to expand on just, you know, what we've enjoyed as far as our success on the other side here. Thank you.
It was just presentation, so at least that way you know what's coming, uh, and what have you. And so we can move on over to the next item. That's really where I'll probably do more talking. But before that, do y'all have any questions? Don't ask to me. I didn't realize this. And again, this is just a, a concept plan. You know, it more or less just tells you with this type of document, street pattern, where they're gonna tie in it. It doesn't really dive down. It's, it's like it's at this level right here. So when we get to this preliminary plan, which is the next sheet, uh, the next item on the agenda, we're gonna drop it down to about this level before we get down to ground level. But, and you need to see this so you can kind of understand how the overall vision looks. It's kind of like when we did, um, Glendale Lakes, Glendale, Glendale Lakes. You know, we came in with a concept plan, and then they just started coming in with sections. And so that's what we're doing right here as well.
Okay, moving on to agenda item eight, B, discussion, consideration of and possible action for the preliminary plat for Reverie Ranch, section one, plus and minus forty-four point six acres, two hundred thirty lots, and eight restricted reserves in block, in seven blocks out of David Fitzgerald survey, A dash twenty-five, city of Arcola, ETJ, Fort Ben County, Texas, and related items. Mr. Lawrence Turner, Colusa Inc.
Thank you. So what I've handed out to you that second here, Dallas, was this preliminary plat for section one, preliminary plat. So that means it's gonna have to come back to us again. Uh, we've gone through, we did a review of this preliminary plat, and I apologize, but we had a meeting last week that said, okay, now you can go and review it. And so I put together a review. I have provided comments. I, they, they do have the comment list. Uh, yeah, why don't you pull it up? Because they do have it. But keep them both their hands. Uh, and so what we did, and you have, what I've been told, you do have this right here in your package. Yeah, perfect. And so what I did, and, and I did send this to, uh, their design engineer, LJ A. Uh, I sent it to our team, and actually, I shared it, uh, with Nino. He got the abbreviated version, look see, uh, abbreviated look see right before the meeting, uh, as well. And so, uh, there are several things that they'll need to address before they even, you know, come back with the, uh, uh, final plat. Uh, you know, and such, some of these things, uh, you know, I always tell everybody, I'm not gonna tell you no, I'm just gonna tell you what you need to do to get to get. That's my job. And then, then follow the rules. That's all I care about. I don't, I don't get to have an opinion on any of these things. Uh, so I'll just kind of run through this. So if you have a question, please call me and stop me as I go through there. Uh, there are not too, too many of them. Uh, item one, Thin Road, they'll need to match the cross-section of width and type of material along Thin Road for their development. Uh, so whatever's there now, they'll need to match. Uh, two, they'll provide us a DIA. He had mentioned that earlier, because they may need to add some turning lanes. Uh, so, uh, they, you know, this is section one. Section one. And I'm only looking at section one. And so when I look at a section, I look at it as if that's the only thing that's gonna be dealt. Even though I have their overall, I have to think about it along those lines because anything can happen. God forbid, but anything can happen, and it has happened this way with several developments. And so, uh, you know, item number two, they'll do that TIA because, uh, there may be some additional, uh, changes and modifications to the payment that may need to be required because they have many entries right here. So they may have to add a left turn lane, a focus based on the value of traffic that's going in and out. But right now, it's just gonna be a two-lane roadway. But when you're talking about, I think ultimately, you said it was like five hundred homes. You know, that's a lot of trip generation. So they'll provide us, you know, that's one of the things we're gonna ask for, is to give a TIA, which is a best traffic issue, not only at the entrance of the subdivision, but how it impacts at the intersection of ten and Highway six. Those items all get looked at because I know those are concerns, and that's just, it's just good business right there.
Would it mess with what Tech Dot is trying to do, widen the roads and stuff with that interference?
Well, that, so he does have one street. When you looked at that conceptual, that's why you wanted to look at that conceptual. Uh, he does have one street that's connecting to Five Twenty-One right over here. And so that's what you're talking about lining up a pine bale right there. So, you know, there's, before you'll be able to get proof with Tech Dot from that, they're gonna require a TIA as well. You know, you can utilize the resource properly and have them look at the entire thing. And then, you know, just depending on phasing of construction, you know, they'll, they'll make whatever adjustments they need to. So that won't come into play until they get ready to make that connection to Five Twenty-One. Uh, there may be some adjustment of, of the signal light at the intersection. Uh, but again, that's what that traffic impact allows is gonna tell us. What needs to happen at that intersection, based on the volume of traffic that's coming from this development, and also taking into consideration what's already coming, because you've got development, existing development down Thin Road beyond this track right here. So we'll be looking at all of that as well, even though that's in the county. And so we'll still have to deal with the county to some degree because they still have, you know, some areas out there, that road and things like that that may need to be dealt with. Uh, item four, you know, and some of these are just, they may have to, they may have to put in some temporary turnaround easements on some of the streets, uh, because, you know, when you have a dead end, like over here. Any type of vehicle, emergency vehicle, whatever, they can do a turnaround right there. When they flatten, they got a one-foot reserve. Once they extend it, then, you know, that temporary turnaround easement goes away, and it's just normal flow right there. Uh, let's see, four. So getting into some infrastructure items. So they submitted a one-line utility joy, and, and this is that preliminary stage. one-line utility joy, and, and this is that preliminary stage. And so just kind of show us, okay, well, here's what we're gonna do. And so, uh, just, we like to just kind of put them on notice, you know, they're gonna have to extend the twelve-inch water line along Finn Road, along the entire boundary and attach it or connect it to the water line that's at the intersection of Finn and five twenty-one. You know, if, if, we're gonna make their financial decisions, they need to know what they're gonna do and, and the level of expectation. Uh, and, and there's a couple of other items where we've asked them that they're gonna have to extend some water lines, uh, along that second street that's called a Don Leaving, at this street over here, you know, that water line that comes along here, and we're saying that they're gonna have to extend the water line and tie it into the line to extend it along Finn Road. Probably give you more than you want, but I'd rather you haven't heard it and not have heard it at all. Uh, let's see, what else? Item Six, uh, we're gonna have to some kind of way, and again, this is about, because at the end of the day, they become your citizens. And so we always look at it too from the standpoint of, this is kind of the big picture, they're gonna have to make sure they have a second feed of water coming in there, because if something happens to the water along Finn Road, you got five hundred folks that don't have water. And they're gonna be knocking on the mayor and council doors on, well, we don't have water, you know, so we wanna try to prevent those things, make sure we have a secondary source of water coming into that development. And so that's what that comment is for. Uh, and then their one line, this just again, some things that they need to do. On their one line, they need to show how they're connecting to the lift station. Uh, they're gonna also provide, uh, as number eight says, uh, how they're gonna route their, uh, sanitary sewer from their lift station over to the wastewater treatment plant, because they just have a note that says that, I need to know, you know, how are you gonna do it? Excuse me. Uh, big thing is, number nine, developing a service agreement for water and wastewater. Uh, that needs to happen before we get to the final flat. You know, we, you know, we learn lessons in life. I don't say everything, nothing's ever mistaken from lesson learned. And so we're learning lessons, and we wanna make sure all that's done before, so there's no issues, there's no questions. It's, uh, I always call it a freedom, we'll make sure we're all in good shape, everybody's all happy, you know how it's supposed to go. Uh, they're gonna also need to, in this preliminary plan for Section One, they're gonna need to include their drainage. If you notice on their, uh, on the pretty colored map, they show all those water features. Well, any work that you're gonna do, that's where your drainage is, you need to include that as part of your preliminary plan, because that's gonna be part of the final plan as well. Yes, ma'am? Ms. Senko, you were gonna ask this? Did you find out? Uh, that's Item Ten, uh, getting close to the end, wrapping up. Uh, let's see, they're gonna have to provide the proper green space, uh, and I've, I've kind of cited, here's, here's, here's the rule right here, it says, here's the, here's the green space you gotta provide. And then, uh, the last thing is, and you had brought it up earlier, about minimum lot size, and so from a subdivision standpoint, how do we use for this? Uh, rep lots, so when it comes to how you lay it out, that kind of thing, that's a standard thing for construction, you know, what type of drainage we're, we've adopted from the city's standards. Uh, and so from a min, they have to have a minimum lot size of five thousand, yeah, uh, again, you know, it's minimum. You can go big, you can go big, but add a minimum. Uh, and I think on their lots, on the flat, they say forty by one twenty, that's forty-eight hundred. And so they're gonna have to make some adjustments or figure it out. They'll, they'll figure it out, I have no doubt about it. I got confidence, those guys gonna figure it out, and they'll address these items, uh, before we move forward. Uh, other than that, those are the comments that I have, you know, even though there are a few, but they're, they require some, some work on their side as well. Uh, other than that, I'll entertain any questions that anyone have of me as it relates to my list or Section One preliminary plan. And what I always tell everybody, I say, is that Section One? They may have other sections, I haven't seen anything that's helping, well, how do they think they're gonna do the rest of the sections? And that's a conversation we can have as well, but we've got an idea of, okay, we're gonna, what's gonna happen next, what's gonna happen? Uh, any questions for me as it relates to this item right here? This is an action item.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
On the other side of Finn Road, are these streets, um, streets that take back down the road?
Oh, yes.
This is Finn Road.
That's Finn Road. This is Finn Road right here. That's definitely existing right here. So on that flat to the far right, this street right here, that street right there, this street right here. And then this street right here, this, this, I'm over the draw, this, that, and this one here. So what they're saying for Section One, kind of goes this way, goes this way, goes this way, and then here, then back up. This is all Section One, right here. So let's go on, see, can you kind of see where my red pen is right there? This is what they're saying Section One is, right there. Color it in red. That's, that's what they're calling Section One right there. Yeah, it's, it's coming off of Finn, that's Finn Road right there. Any other questions, comments? All right, well, that's an action item, attorney?
So that's an action. Put it, put it with conditions. Have engineering on it to give it to the conditions.
Can I entertain a motion?
Motion. Preliminary, uh, Section, if they get you, uh, representation, if they're gonna, if they're gonna do it.
This is, motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Abor, uh, to approve the preliminary plan for, uh, Redberry Ranch with conditions. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed. We are now at Agenda Item Number Nine, Purchasing. A, Discussion, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution with Fort Bend County Road and Bridge Not to Exceed the Amount of Five Thousand Dollars for the City of Arcola's Maintenance Division Driveway General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, uh, Horpkins County Road and Bridge is actually going to finish the driveway from our parking lot to the maintenance division. Um, they are going to, uh, they were gonna try to finish it today, but they weren't in Hamilton, but they will finish it tomorrow. And all we are paying for is the material not left.
So can I entertain a motion on this purchase?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the resolution for Fort Bend County Road and Bridge, Council this season, now five thousand dollars.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Senko, and seconded by Councilmember Digby, to approve the resolution for Fort Bend County, not to exceed, uh, the amount of five thousand dollars for the city of Arcola Maintenance Division driveway. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Nine, B, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution with Fort Bend County Road and Bridge Not to Exceed the Amount of Forty Thousand Dollars for the City of Arcola City Hall Parking Lot General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, again, Horpkins County Road and Bridge has proposed that they will, um, do the parking lot in front of City Hall with the asphalt. It would consist of curb stops and it also includes striping, and this is the cost for material.
And there's your cost.
I make a motion to approve the contract between Penn Comp LLC and City of Arcola. I make a motion to approve the resolution for Fort Bend County Road and Bridge, not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Senko, and seconded by Councilmember Jones, uh, to approve the, the resolution for Fort Bend County Road and Bridge Not to Exceed Four Forty Thousand Dollars for the parking lot. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed. Agenda Item Ten, Contracts and Agreement. Discussion and, A, Discussion and Consider, Consideration of the Emergency Contract Between Penn Comp LLC and the City of Arcola from July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four to August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four as a result of the Emergency IC Security Audit in the amount of five thousand dollars, General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, we're asking your approval for this time period as discussed during the executive session. Uh, this is my.
I make a motion to approve the emergency contract between Penn Comp and the City of Arcola. The amount of five thousand dollars.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Abor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Senko, to approve the emergency contract between Penn Comp and the City of Arcola. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Ten, B, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Enter Into a Contract Between Penn Comp LLC and the City of Arcola for an annual agreement starting, starting August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four through August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for IT services not to exceed the amount of sixty thousand dollars, General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Penn Comp has been used by the police department for their IT services for approximately three years, and we are going to use the same company on the administrative side. The police chief is here and she's gonna attest that they have provided really good service, and during our emergency contract, we have been very pleased with their services. As you can see, the cost for this contract not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, there will be an approximately forty thousand dollar savings in the general fund because of this discussion.
I make a motion to approve that manual contract between Penn Comp and the City of Arcola.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abor, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to approve the annual contract between Penn Comp and the City of Arcola, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Ten, C, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Allow Municipal Operations and Consultancy, MOCs, to Utilize K-three BMI to Perform a Top-Bottom Cleanout of Lift Station Number One in the Amount of Three Thousand Five Hundred in Surprise Funds. Mr. Roland Leal, MOC Area Manager, Operations.
Yes, once again, Mayor and Council, one of the things that I've noticed when we, when we got hit with Barrow in the last rainstorm is we take a lot of infiltration and sanitary water sewer, and everything gets pushed into this, eventually to this one being our main lift station number one. Looking in the past, I noticed that we hadn't had any maintenance or clean in over a year. And one of the, the things that we can do to be proactive as far as maintaining our pumps, keeping them from ragging up or having a situation where they burn up like the lift station two, is doing a maintenance of this. So what I'm asking is approval that we use K-three to be able to clean out this lift station. I have provided pictures in, with the mayor and Dr. Net, um, on how it looked, and it's in need, so I'm hoping with this, we can start taking better action in maintaining the lift station.
And how often, Roland, did you say we need to do it?
Um, for this, going till December, we'd like to do it this one time. Moving forward, we'd like to add it. Moving forward, it's something that we would do by, for once, once every six months or twice a year, just to stay ahead, um, of the game and getting, keeping this, this lift station maintained. As we move to the new one, we'll re, relook at that because obviously it'll be bigger, we'll be handling a different, different blow and what it's doing, so we may change that and tweak it, but right now with lift station one.
I make a motion to approve the agreements between the municipal operations by utilizing K-three, as we, we talked about in the lift station.
Motion has been made, motion has been made by Councilmember Abor, seconded by Councilmember Digby, to, uh, approve the MOCs, uh, approve the action from MOC to perform the top-to-bottom cleanout for lift station number one. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed. Ten, D, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Two-Year Agreement Between Mohammed, Judge Mo, Municipal Court Judge, and the City of Arcola, Texas, for a monthly amount of thirty-three hundred dollars, General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, we, we have discussed this during the executive session. I will share with you, he does not have a contract now, and you're proposing a two-year contract with a monthly amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
And that's also a one, of course, um, mayors, like, to ensure.
That is correct. So every administration will have the option to renew or withhold.
I make a motion to approve the agreement between, uh, between, uh, the, 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 the next one.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Senko, to approve the two-year agreement with Judge Mo and the City of Arcola for a monthly amount of thirty-three hundred dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed. Item Ten, E, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Contract with Gulf Coast Accounting Services and the City of Arcola, Texas, Not to Exceed the Amount of Fifty Thousand Dollars Annually, General Fund. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We discussed this during the executive session, and if you have any questions.
I make a motion to approve the contract between, uh, uh, the, 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 the amount of fifty thousand.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abor, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to approve the contract between Gulf Coast County and the City of Arcola. All in favor? All opposed? Motion is passed. Item Eleven, A, Requested Items. Discussion Regarding Modification to the City's Towing Contract and Potentially Adopting a Towing Ordinance. Mayor Pro Tim Ebene Senko and Councilmember Evelyn Jones.
Essentially with the, the purpose was to add somebody, add towing to the two-years of the location, so the issue that we're talking about are, firstly, you have an existing contract with the towing company that has an annual, automatic annual, that annual renewal hits and, 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 every year. So the contract also requires, if you have, if you have a contract with a, with a, with a company, that you have to, you have to, you have to, you have to do it, and then I would suggest you have to have that, but, and we're, if you're looking at, to do a location system, as you're sitting in the lot house now, that's where it requires building it, and, and, it's very specific, and, 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 this is very specific, and I think that's why you get that looked up, and so that's why it's related in the agenda, where you just have a new towing company, you can't add it into the current contract, so you have to have a new contract, new company, which needs to establish a system that allows rotation and then to install it, and that's a lot to talk about, but you know.
I I would just like to say, I know Fred Burden came in here and made a dramatic presentation and all of that, but you know, when other uh companies or whatever approached the city and asked us to do business with them, we we don't tell them, just tell them no, there's a process to be able to do it or not to do it, and so when we had that, we were just looking at, you know, because if we don't act, then it's, you know, it's like we are not doing business with certain people and only doing business with these people, so we are just being open to what uh was requested, it's not, it doesn't mean that we are necessarily going to change, but there may be some changes, so uh it wasn't that, you know, if, you know, we came up here, we just decided, hey, we want another towing service, so we appreciate the service without them giving to the city, so it it wasn't like that, so I just wanna make that clear.
And I'd love to say, Mayor, that uh, you know, I've been on council a long time, uh quality of service that you're in, uh they told the city vehicles, and they're in trouble for free, and in charge of sitting in money, they have done any of this for the city, and we were in receivership, and we didn't have money to buy, you know, uh doing stuff, so I mean, they've they've started the city with, and you know, I'm the type of person who's usually in the confronts, you know, on fixing, so my opinion, I just agree with the same, you know, because it's everybody working, drive, achieve, and still, you know, what's going on, and you're not, you know, all of a sudden starting to confuse people, like, well, who do I call today, you know, who I call this company, or who I call that company, right now, we know, if you call a company, they're calling, and they're like, you're awesome, so I'm just trying to stay with the opinion, I know the other opinions, but I'm just trying to, you know.
Would you, that's a motion that's made, and the contact.
Uh we would even look at, we just have discussed, uh, we can look at, and can we have the time, if we were to adjust the contract, technically, kind of, the contract, you know, just not, you know, yeah, and that is, because that's the bottom line, that's the most likely mission, yes, we don't have to make a certain amount of money, and that, and if you want to see a closed, there would be those those kind of systems, the larger cities, the smaller cities, uh, and there's several, you know, companies that are operated, kind of, work that need to be done, there would be a little bit more gray on staff and the administration that that has to set up some systems that, you know, companies, so, you know, hopefully it's good, maybe something that, maybe not, but then we can bring that to you, you know. So right now, it's just, you have to do one off contract, but you don't, you don't have, with no, with no rotation system, so when we have fewer, you have to have some kind of replaced, system replaced, maybe that kind of company, that's the last thing. So what we, so that, the system will allow for that, so that's what we're just trying to get, maybe show how all the companies can come in, we have their, if you want to, you know, essentially not bidding, but you know, presentation standards, that kind of thing, to be all that, there's gonna be, you know, many licensing, all of that, we need to sign up, we need to do it, and all those things that you don't have to do that right now, but one contract, control it, but when you open it up, it's, you have to do that, you have to show, and he he gets seven tall companies to come in, and he's going to use three four standard tall companies to me, so those are the kind of things about building, and if you can't, if you can't do that, then you find new, start a company, kind of seeing like that, and I mean, build a system, and for sure, it seems that, you know, we can do that, and show, the system is the best way to cover it, so that, so those kind of things, people look at my thing.
Seems very problematic. Yeah, but the order of promotion, you know.
But right now, I mean, I would think right now, you're not picking action, you know, all those things, just knowing that, but this in contract, the only thing that really matters to the city is that we have, if you're going to choose that one, not the other, we have to tell the company, and I feel like, if you're not told, we're not, so then, so not, then that one, I mean, it's probably, and then, because, I mean, it's a system.
No action, that's the type of like this.
No motion, yeah, that's, I understand, just, just that you all know that, that this is off August, so I don't know how, when August, when you get off further, that's when it's gonna take action, so maybe next month, during that time, we can, we can wrap one of the two acts, and just like.
On to agenda item number eleven, ordinances. A. I'm sorry, twelve, uh thank you, I apologize, twelve, ordinances, A, discussion, consideration of and possible action on an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcola, Texas, adopt adopting certain requirements regarding full-time, full-time equivalent staff positions and oversight, authorizing the mayor or designated to execute any and all documents necessary to it initiate this ordinance, repealing any ordinance, regulation, or policy in conflict with the ordinance, provided for servability and providing an effective date, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and council, as we discussed uh yesterday, this ordinance does four things. One, when we come to you annually to approve the budget, we provide you a list of what I call FTE, full-time equivalent, we give you a number, we give you a name, any variance once you have approved that must come back to council, please. Second thing it does is it says any FTE, full-time equivalent position that is going to be offered a salary in excess of a hundred thousand must come before city council, please. We will, the third thing it does, it says that any position cannot get a salary increase in excess of ten percent, and the fourth thing it does, if it, if it does, it's gotta come before city council, and the fourth thing it does, no more than one salary increase per person, and that is the ordinance that's required.
If the question would be, dump, do your ordinance, uh, on these, uh, full-time, uh, the, uh, you know.
Motion, motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Mayor Procham Sanco to adopt the full-time equivalent staff position, oversight, uh, ordinance, all in favor?
All in.
All opposed, motion passed.
Twelve B, discussion consideration of and possible action on an ordinance of the city, of the city council of the City of Arcola, Texas, allowing the placement of manufactured homes outside of a designated manufactured housing community in certain circumstances, providing for repeal, providing for servability, and providing an effective date, Mayor, Vito Villanueva.
Uh, so on this uh ordinance, what we sought to do, because we received some requests from residents, uh is to allow residents who own their own property to bring in a manufactured home, and there are certain conditions, that they have to be at least, not, no more than five years old, it has to be in good condition, and it has to be inspected uh before, uh to make sure that it meets those conditions. Uh, once again, let me say that uh Mayor Burden, or former Mayor Burden, who came in here, he dropped his bomb on the city, and caused, talked about how trashy the city will look uh with these homes, and he had no problem bringing in two hundred and twelve mobile homes to mobile home park, uh and and I I really take great exception to him coming in here doing that, and then he leaves, and or he hides behind his Facebook page that he claims is an Arcola citizens page, it is not an Arcola citizens page, because he doesn't allow all Arcola citizens to participate on that page, if he doesn't like what you say, he, you know, uh, what is it, councils do, off that box you, or whatever, and one thing that he said today that I take exception of things to, he made a post on there today that says, when you are raised in a dump, quite naturally you would support turning the entire city into a dump, this is the same man who was just competing for the votes of these residents, and he has the audacity to try to pass judgment on how people live, and I wish he would have been here to, so I could tell him to his face, and I I hate to take this moment, but I'm gonna tell you something, I represent the residents of this city, and he was here for six years, if he didn't do all the things he did to invest in the city for it not to be a so-called dump, he should have done it, and he did not, so for him to come in here and say that and then run out of here, that tells you all I need to know and say about him and about that, at this point, I would entertain a motion from the council on this issue.
Right, motion.
Just to make sure I'm clear on what actually, so not opening up facilities to have mobile homes in, state law, and and we didn't use the words correctly, you know, sounds, sounds, you know, assuming, there's difference between mobile homes and manufactured homes, there's certain, mobile homes are, and I think of the day, it's like seventy-six, seventy-five.
Nineteen eighty.
It's seventy, seventy-something, I know, there's something in seventy, you get, they're good, and it's a decision, anything after that, seventy, seventy-five, seventy-six, day, the future's for the manufactured home, why that, why that's important, what we want to know, it's that, if there, if there was HUD manufactured homes, this HUD inspects them, has to stick around those homes, and that's what's there, so there, there's federal oversight, federal inspection happening on those homes, so if American public this ordinance could do is that, you already have in place manufactured homes, you know, to manufacture home parks, all certain standards, this is gonna save the people that own, there's lots, they can have, they can have a manufactured home put on that lot, again, HUD, pretty manufactured homes, you know, can store, just by standards for that homes, it's not gonna be, you know, like, 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 mobile homes, so on that, and there's, it's gotta be your basic requirements for better than manufactured homes, it's not gonna be, not gonna put self-stated housing in the city, so it makes, it satisfies all city ordinance unless all that comes, or self-acting.
That's, that's, of course.
My, no, actually, yes, it's not our, the manufactured homes, is a, well, we look, if you look at it, you think it's a mobile home, but it's, it's something that, it has a, it has a HUD, manufactured homes stamp on it, but it's not, it's not, uh.
Um, um, for people that aren't right, um, how many, I mean, I mean, how many manufactured homes, I mean, you know, it's a question.
One, two, yeah.
I don't understand, I, 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 I.
It's just saying, one, what?
So, that's our, that's, that's, it's sort of, only, only acceptable, so, again, we're not doing what the manufactured home park, that's good, nothing big changed, but that's still a, a city, this is just saying, certain circumstances, you know, we heard that people, those, those, like, specific exceptions, we're doing that, first of all, it's a lot, it has a manufactured home, it has a, that's, that's, it's all, it's five, it's just like in one lot, I mean, you can't have two homes in one lot, you can't have one manufactured home.
Fair enough.
Yes, that means, it's about, the same works with, it's in similar, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of.
It's been also, you know, their public, sometimes, they may, they may have water in school.
It has, it's, 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 we have to have, it's, 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 they have to, they have to, they have to, they have to, and school lines, and, I mean.
If there are connections available in the city, they have to give water and sewer connections, if, if there, if there are no water and sewer connections available to them, they are, they have been allowed to do, take away a well. No, I'm just, I'm, I saw your mouth over there, I saw, I saw your mouth, I saw you, I saw you over there. Yeah, no, you, you have something to add to that? Oh, no, I was just, briefly, Lawrence, we on the end of this.
So, I'll say right here, jump out and let you hear, uh, so, essentially what happens is, the rule is, if you have it existing well, it goes down, you have to, well, city services, and and I think what Council Abar is saying is, you have some areas that don't have public facilities in front of the property, and so in those cases, you know, we make a determination, do we attend city services now, that's on a case-by-case basis, there's very few spots to like that, and the other thing that, um, um, it's, it's, they have some, they have a lot, but a fifteen acres, and so your question was, you know, if they wanna put two homes on there, can they put two standards on it?
Manufact, too many.
Manufact, yeah.
Manufact, that's what she was asking, they wanted to make this, she got her answer.
Oh, yeah, is, is this planted, is that permitted, uh, yes, be planted?
If you want to, that's subsidized, you have an idea, so, it's, it's, if you want to put more than one home on that property, and the rule is there, if they want to, you know, I got, you know, I like my kids, they're, you know, grandkids, and I need to, you know, subsidize it, because that's, you know, that's obviously the mobile home park.
And that's not being intentional.
That's what I'm saying, it's, 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 the understanding is that we're allowed any mobile home, mobile home, but it only, that's not happening, so manufactured home, manufactured home park still is in place, and that's still in basic need of one, there's certain exceptions to that, and that's the, that's the, 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 the reverse, of course.
And and I apologize, I just kinda got a little, you know, yes, wanna, okay, all right, now, may I entertain a motion, please?
I make a motion that, I'm, 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 outside of the designated manufactured housing community, it's certain, what he seems to provide for, he feels provided, but he doesn't, he doesn't do it anymore, so, and he thinks he's gonna
Motion has been made to uh uh accept the ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcola, allowing the placement of manufactured homes outside of a designated manufactured housing community. And the second by Mayor Procham, uh, Sanco, all in favor?
All in.
All opposed, motion has passed.
Twelve C, discussion, twelve C, discussion consideration of and possible action on an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcola, Texas, setting a preliminary ad valorem tax rate for the City of Arcola for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, setting the date and time of a public hearing to be held regarding the fiscal.